The December fourteenth.
Discovery room.
Up towards the office, in that door and then on the right.
December fourteenth, meeting of the Barrington Planning Board. Tonight in attendance, we have Ron Allard, Jeff Brand, myself, James Jenison, Andy Knapp. With us virtually is Steve Diamond, as well as, find my name, Carol Ogilvy, the planning consultant, John Huckins, code enforcement officer, Barbara Irvine, land use administrative assistant, and town administrator, Conne MacGyver. First on the agenda, we have, do you not have minutes from the last meeting? Not, no minutes, alright, we'll jump right into the zoning. We'll run down, one at a time, have brief discussion, open to public comment. Move on if that appeases everybody. Item number one is to amend the zoning map by changing tax map two twenty, lots fifty-seven and fifty-seven dash one through fifty-seven dash seventeen, from regional commercial to general residential.
And the reasoning for that is that the purpose of this amendment is to zone these lots to be consistent with their current use, which is as part of an open space subdivision, therefore no longer appropriate for commercial use.
Does the board have any comments on number one, item one, article two? Hearing none, we'll open it for public comment. If there's anybody here that would like to speak in regards to that, come up to the mic, the camera, please, and state your name and address and, pardon me, yeah?
Steven Jeffrey, A. Francis.
Sit down, the microphone right there, I'll make sure it picks you up.
Hopefully you can hear me through my mask. My real concern with both this change and the next one is that it sounds an awful lot like spot zoning. Where originally one twenty-five was designated as a commercial zone. And I'm not sure how it's in the town's best interest to prevent somebody from putting something commercial on a residential lot. And why that's a violation of anything. So.
Just to, just to clarify, that the five hundred feet along one twenty-five would be preserved as commercial by, it's only behind that commercial property, which has been developed in, when, you know, they got the proper approvals to be able to put the residences back. So now that that's being residentialized, it doesn't negate the commercial value of what's along one twenty-five.
And this is the lot one, though.
There's, one of them is the lot of Tolan Road that was developed into a subdivision. And then this is the one that would be behind the commercial lots where the town hall, two commercial lots being developed up to where Tolan Road is intersects on one twenty-five. So that corridor there, in fact, they've actually already come in with a design review about those commercial lots. So they'd be preserved. It's only those lots that are behind.
In any case.
The intent, if I could explain, the intent of this was residential law on the existing. And if someone come in because they're in the regional commercial zone, they would have a right, like, to meet the requirements of the regional commercial thing, to put a business in the middle of a residential neighborhood.
Yeah.
Reason for changing this is so that wouldn't happen. So you have a house, someone else has a house, and some kind of business right in the middle of your residential neighborhood. That's the reason for the change.
Well, I understand how the residents may be concerned, but I'm not sure that in necessarily in the town best interest. So that's my concern.
I think that.
I think one of the challenging pieces is when you look at this lot, it, it, which is what all, pretty much all of these lot items here are, is you made a reference to spot zoning. And the spot zoning is more really kind of what it was in the original layout. Because if you followed the old zoning map, it just followed lot sizes. It didn't actually set perimeters or setbacks or anything that made more sense from a where you would want your commercial versus your residential. And some of what the board's trying to do is clean that up so it, it fits more appropriately into what, where commercial and residential would outweigh.
So my concern is, you know, you really want to be careful about how you're doing this. So it doesn't look like it's giving somebody some preferential treat.
I think it's the exact opposite of spot zoning, but.
Oh, it may be.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we understand.
We understand your concern. Commercial development, sorry. Sitting at the wheel.
But the development anyway.
Well, the issue here is these lots, lots are deep. If the, if the lot touches it, it can go back two thousand feet.
Sure.
And the requirement's only five hundred feet. So lots that sucked into this, it probably, more probably would suck into this.
I would believe they were, they were, spot zoning would have been more appropriate with how they were done when they did the original commercial layout area. This is really cleaning that up so that, that it doesn't look like that.
I just, you know, I had a concern because it looks like you're preventing somebody from putting commercial use in.
If you go by state's requirements and also that town's regulation, to try to, the whole idea behind zoning is to separate uses to compatibility.
Correct.
So if you put a commercial use right in the middle of a residential subdivision, would actually cause a problem, even though you think it's, would still be beneficial for the town to allow that. It would cause a conflict between the uses in an area close together, which zoning is supposed to make sure it doesn't happen. And it's the town's responsibility to make sure that doesn't happen. So if the town doesn't do this, the town is actually creating its own.
Oh, I understand.
And it actually will devalue the property around this.
In amendment three, I can't change it to commercial. This is not an anti-commercial property, you know, situation at all. Just say cleaning up a park.
Appreciate. Not abundantly clear in the, in it.
Well.
We had, we had maps that made it easier.
Well, yeah.
Well, one is an approved residential subdivision.
Yep.
But changing that to commercial.
They don't have houses in it, do they?
Yeah, almost all of them.
How about the other one?
All built houses. The only thing that's not was the open space. The open space you can't.
Develop anyway.
Correct. So.
The ones behind where the town hall's going.
They have not been developed because developers are still waiting for the.
Correct, correct, right.
For the road.
So what if somebody bought ten of those lots, put something commercial in there?
Well, along one twenty-five.
That's what we're trying to avoid. Yeah, exactly.
Disadvantage to the town.
Technically, it's not. Technically, those other lots are all approved as residential use. So therefore, if someone bought that and tried to put those back together and make a commercial use, then they're being direct conflict with the uses that were approved by the planning board, which the planning board is trying to make sure it doesn't happen. So it's like your argument almost depends why they're doing this.
Just think of the contamination and runoff from a commercial use up.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you. Any other comments on number one, article two? If anybody online with us?
Just Mr. Diamond.
Alright. Close public comment? Any more comments from the board? Do I need to motion on each of these to?
Each one has to be done motioned and voted on separately.
Move forward or what's the motion?
To move forward to one.
Is that, that?
That works.
When do you wage your recommendations?
They're gonna vote now. So they would have whatever the vote is to.
If we don't.
The recommendation is only on the petition warrant article. They have to vote whether or not they recommend it or not. And this one here, it's gonna be brought forward by the planning board with a vote out.
Okay, that's the only vote that's recorded on the warrant. Thanks.
It's, the warrant article's not gonna say the board recommends it or.
We'll say the board recommends it.
Five to one.
Or six to zero.
What John's saying is you just use the same vote that you used to move it forward as recommended.
Right, alright, yeah.
Maybe make sure the motion says to move forward.
Yeah, and if we were gonna make any changes based on public comment, then we'd have to have another public hearing.
Correct.
But I'm assuming nobody wants to make any changes to this?
The explanation being, the purpose of this amendment is to zone these lots to be consistent with their current use. Which is as part of an open space subdivision and therefore no longer appropriate for commercial use. Reasonably clear?
Okay. Alright, I will make a motion to move forward with amendment number one. Article two as proposed by the Barrington Planning Board.
Second.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Andy Knapp, Ron Allard.
All right.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, I.
Andy Knapp.
Knapp, I.
Jamie Jenison, I. Steve Diamond.
Diamond, I.
All in favor? Five, zero. Alright. Next one. Amendment number two for the Barrington zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board to amend the zoning map by changing tax map two twenty-three lots twenty-four and twenty-six from regional commercial to general residential after the first five hundred feet from one twenty-five. The explanation is, the purpose of this amendment is to zone the remainder of this parcel for uses that are consistent with its current approved uses. Board have any comments? Hearing none, public comment? Say, we'll carry that one over.
Mr. Jeffrey, your, your comment, you said was applicable to this as well.
And, and for the record, to add, Mr. Jeffrey's handout, please, for both number one and number two. Thank you. Hearing no other comment, we'll close public comment. A motion to move forward.
I'm making a motion to move amendment number two to article two forward to one as proposed.
Second it.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second to Andy Knapp, James Jenison, I. Steve Diamond.
Diamond, I.
Ron Allard.
All right.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, I.
Andy Knapp.
I.
Motion carries five oh. Number three, for the Barrington zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board to amend zoning map by changing tax map two fifty-one lots sixty-four and sixty-five from general residential to regional commercial. The purpose of this amendment is to zone these two parcels for uses that are consistent with their current use and to increase the opportunities for commercial, commercial development in this location. This is the one, this is the sand pit.
Yeah, and, yeah, to be clear, this is, this is the sand and gravel pit, which is currently in commercial use.
Or residential.
Well, no, it is currently in commercial use. It was given a grandfather, it's in a general residential district, but they were allowed to continue to operate as a business. And the forward, the property between the gravel pit up front is the one where two-way tactical has come in and put in the application to develop that. So, so those properties are being used for commercial purposes, but they're sitting in a general residential zone. So it was to, basically, this goes back to the corridor of around one twenty-five. Their businesses, they're on one twenty-five, but they, they ended up in the general residential zone. So it's to rezone them appropriately, the uses that their current use was, you know, what we have designated as the corridor along one twenty-five.
Any other comments from the board? Hearing none, we'll open the comment. Speak on that one? Comment?
I think still nobody other than Diamond on that.
Correct. Alright, so I'm making.
As I say, I'll make a motion to move amendment three forward to the warrant. Approval to rezone tax map two fifty-one lots sixty-four and sixty-five from general residential to regional commercial.
Sir. Motion by Andy Knapp, second by Jeff Brand, James Jenison, I, Ron Allard.
All right.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, may.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, I.
Andy Knapp.
Knapp, I.
Motion carries forward to. Amendment number four, are you in favor for the Barrington zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board to amend section two point one as follows? Should any of the three amendments proposed above pass, change the date of the zoning map from March eighth, two thousand five to March eighth, twenty-two, and modify the last sentence to read, a reproduction of this map is contained in the appendix of this ordinance and available at the town's website. The purpose of this amendment is to update the date of the zoning map should any of the first three proposed amendments pass.
And it was, it also serves by adding available to town's website. Currently, there's a very small version of the map that's supposed to be in the back of the zoning ordinance that hasn't been updated yet. So we want to fix that, but at the same time, a lot of people don't have written copies of the zoning ordinance so as to direct them to the town's website. And there are copies of the map that will update at the town website, so you don't have to have other.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, we'll open public comment. We'll close public comment. Motion to move forward.
I make a motion to move amendment four to amend section two point one, point one of the Barrington zoning ordinance as proposed by Barrington.
Second it.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second to Andy Knapp, Ron Allard.
All right.
James Jenison, I. Steve Diamond.
Diamond, I.
Andy Knapp.
Knapp, I.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, I.
Motion carries five oh. Are you in favor of amendment number five for the Barrington zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board to amend table two by adding a new footnote to regional commercial as follows? One, on other than state roads, where it sees EG, routes four and one twenty-five, the minimum front setback is forty feet. The purpose of this amendment is to formalize what has been a standing practice.
I just want to make, no, and I did this up at the last meeting.
And I thought I had changed it. So I apologize.
I E, I E G.
Exactly.
Not for example.
Yes.
Though this.
They mean the same thing.
They do not. I, I.
Modern English, you can say anything.
You just make up any definition to a word you choose. But I know.
Whatever.
Yeah, I don't think that editorial remarks would require another, another public hearing, right?
No.
It's not a substantial change.
No.
That's how they listed as substantial change.
Right, and I believe grammatical changes and things like that were all con, yeah, exactly.
We could actually do those without actually going to war.
Yes.
Alright, any comments on this? Hearing none, we'll open public comment. Any comments concerns on that one? Hearing none, we'll close public comment. Other input from the board? Hearing none, a motion?
I make a motion to move amendment number five to amend table two of the zoning ordinance forward to work as proposed by the Barrington.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Ron Allard, Andy Knapp.
I.
James Jenison, I. Steve Diamond.
Diamond, I.
Ron Allard.
All right.
Jeff. Are you in favor of amendment number six for the Barrington zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board to amend section six point two point two, parents three as follows? The total amount of open space that is identified as open water, wetland soils, exposed ledge, or other terrain conditions that would normally be considered otherwise undevelopable shall not constitute more than fifty percent of the area required as open space within a conservation subdivision. The explanation is, the purpose of this amendment is to make clear that the minimum required buildable land, fifty percent in the open space is based on the minimum amount of land required to be in open space, allowing the developer to offer more open space without the extra open space having to meet the fifty percent requirement. Explanation still. But, uh. Fourth comment? That makes sense, the explanation? We're gonna get that?
If not, Ron can explain.
I wrote it and it doesn't make sense to me.
Well, actually, I wrote it and Carol said I'll keep it forward. The intent was.
I understand.
They add more open space that wasn't buildable. They didn't have to meet the fifty percent buildable area. They could give the extra land above what the requirement. I think that says it in that explanation.
In the explanation, does it say in the body of it as well?
The explanation says the reason for this was to allow them to add extra land that over and above the minimum requirement, even if it doesn't amount of buildable area. I mean, they could add, I don't know if it actually would.
And the open space, and the minimum amount of land, the open space, allowing.
Yeah, so it says the minimum amount, the purpose of this amendment is to make it clear that the minimum amount of required buildable land, which is fifty percent in the open space, is based on the minimum amount of land required to be open space. So if the minimum amount of land was required to be twelve acres, six acres, it has to be upland soil. So if they want to give you three more acres, so they're going over the minimum requirement, that other land doesn't have to meet that fifty percent requirement. And that's why it says allowing the developer to offer more open space without the extra open space having to meet the fifty percent requirement.
I think it's a little clean if we take the there out, without extra open space. Without, without the need for extra open space to meet, something like that.
What, what requirement is it meeting at the end there?
If you go, what was the section in zoning?
Six, two.
Six, two.
Six, two. Please.
I mean, if you just, if you ended it at allowing the developer to offer more open space, I think people would, okay, more open space. Without the extra open space having to meet, because it does, if you give extra, it doesn't have to meet the requirement, does it? Of being buildable? Is that, is that what we're trying to? Yes, that's what.
So if they give extra now, it has to be buildable?
If they give more open space, you add more.
Half of it has to be buildable.
So if the requirement was to put three acres in open space of buildable, but they wanted to give you ten acres, you'd have to give another five acres of buildable? You couldn't just give them wetland stuff?
Give you the extra land. Let them give you the extra land.
That makes sense. Having to meet fifty percent, buildable. Maybe just, do we have to, if I add?
Right here.
I add a word.
So the open space requirement is in the general residential, half of the land has to be open space. So half, let's say it's, I'm gonna use an easy number. So let's say it's a hundred acre. You gotta put at least fifty acres in open space, and twenty-five of that has to be buildable. So let's say because they're able to cluster the houses closer together, they'll give you sixty acres, an extra ten acres. But the way it's written here is you would have to be five acres buildable plus five acres non-buildable. If they want to give you ten acres of non-buildable, why wouldn't you not just let them add it to it? Because it's not, because it's over and above what's required.
Right.
Then in the, um. And you gotta do at least sixty percent in the neighborhood residential that has to be open space. So I mean, it's based on the percentage of the lot. Then half of it has to be buildable.
That's it. So if we add the word fifty percent buildable requirement, we have to do another hearing on this by adding that one word?
No, because the meaning and intent hasn't changed. It's just.
So at the end of it, it says without the extra open space having to meet the fifty percent buildable requirement. Does that make it more clear?
That's not a substantial change. That's a grammatical thing.
Yeah, and I don't want to change it just to change it. If it makes, I just, does it make it more clear?
Well, I think, I think we should change the explanation, not the.
That's what I'm saying, the explanation.
In the last sentence of the explanation.
Even calling saying more open space, should it say additional open space?
That makes more sense. It makes it clearer.
Because, because additional should be clear to everybody that it's above and beyond.
Correct. Above and beyond must be clear.
So if we, if we change that, allowing the developer to offer additional open space without the extra open space having to meet the fifty percent buildable requirement?
How about? How about with that, that extra space instead of the? Is that clearer? Without that extra open space having to meet the fifty percent requirement? I mean, that's clean.
I mean, you could even say.
Skip over those words.
To, to offer additional open space without the additional open space having to meet the fifty percent requirement.
So I know it's kind of with the same additional space.
Right. I'm happy with that.
I know.
Yeah.
But it just wa, it wasn't clear to me, so I know it's not gonna be clear to anybody else. Well, I think maybe clear to other people.
It's a bad thing if you don't.
Right, you know the intent, but the explanation didn't.
Deep into it.
The language around how it plays, so.
Show them the subdivision down there, so I'll report. Like, this is why. Because these extra wetlands require a special.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Open up the public comment?
Can you get these off without pulling my hearing aids off?
How you doing?
My brother has these.
Oh my God, I lost one on the, you know, somewhere at my feet in the car with all my other junk.
Just thought. CJ, we gotta do, you gotta state the name and address to get started.
Sure, I'm Ken Grossman, Scruton Pond Road. I'm also chair of the Conservation Commission. And I think I was asleep at the wheel because I wish I'd discussed this with the Conservation Commission at the last meeting. I have a sense that if had discussed it, we would have liked it. And maybe we would have helped with the language a little bit. Apparently you needed it.
Obviously, we.
But, but the, the one thought that I have on it is that one that says, other terrain generally considered, how does it go?
Other terrain conditions that would normally be considered otherwise undevelopable.
Yeah, and, and that's, um, sounds a little subjective. And could vary depending on who is making that judgment.
Well, to give you this big example that causes to do this is that somebody came in for a subdivision plan and because of the fifty percent requirement. So they were, but part of, a large part of the lot went to wetlands.
Yeah, I think it was at that meeting.
Under the definition, they wouldn't have been able to add the wetlands in, which we all wanted to protect.
So with Mr. Grossman's concern, the, the term, other terrain conditions that would not be considered otherwise undevelopable, what would those, I think that works, doesn't that work better in our favor? Because developable land is gonna be upland.
Want to be consistent with what's in six, um, two now. So you kind of want to keep the same language. To where you're using like one definition to another thing and.
Okay, I can't see, I can't easily see a situation where we would say, oh, that's, that terrain could be deemed developable where it would, we'd be more likely to say that's probably not developable by thing.
It's actually defined under that, in the whole proposal there. It says the total amount of open space that is identified as open water, wetland soils, exposed ledge, and other terrain conditions which are normally not considered otherwise undevelopable, but constitute more than the area. Instead of saying, I mean, area, it says area.
It's the, it's the other part that's, that's, everything in front of that sounds great. But it's that other considered, considered by, just, you know how people are.
Yeah.
I think.
Like to argue about stuff.
Yeah.
It's subjective, but we have it to say on.
That would change the language of that. I don't think it would change the intent or what they're trying to achieve, but it would have to be rewritten and then we'd have to have a hearing.
But I think that language gives us more authority to look at.
I think so.
Look at land that we deem as unde.
Because it would be the one that makes that decision.
Right, as opposed to the other way around. If we take it out, they could say, well, that's developable land, and we have nothing to say, no. That's terrain that's considered undevelopable.
Would say that, but I.
Right.
If you're comfortable with that, that's fine. I'm just thinking somebody someday is gonna argue with you.
And.
Still argue with you before.
Whatever.
Okay, I just, that's all I had, that's all I have to say at it, and by.
Ken, if you read it as a whole, it's got a comment. The comment says, will other terrain conditions that would normally be considered otherwise undevelopable? That would need to be steep slopes and that kind of stuff, because that's specifically about terrain.
That's a good example.
Is it actually, well, actually, that's what it says.
Doesn't mention steep slopes in the beginning.
It says, will other terrain conditions that would normally be considered otherwise undeveloped?
Yeah, I don't see.
Someone has real steep slopes and you're able not to get to it or not safely get to it to. or not safely get to it to where you can get emergency services and all the other stuff. To me, that was what the board would say. That terrain really is undevelopable. You can't count it.
But I'm, I'm sorry, John, I don't have.
No, there's some right at the end of the table.
Oh, okay. Yeah, and I, I'm sorry to take so much time.
That's okay. I mean, I think that's a good example because someone could say, that's upland. And we could say, no, those are steep slopes. They're not developed.
Oh, okay, so. Last, yeah, I've, I've got it. Yeah, no, I've got it where it says other terrain conditions. And, and that, and last.
I think Jamie's correct.
Why not specifically mention steep slope?
Well, we, we can put it, we could put more, we put more things in there.
It could be other terrain things that are above and beyond steep slopes that they could consider too.
And I would want to.
Don't want to kind of limit.
And I'd want to define.
Taken up enough time.
And I'd want to define steep slopes because they could say, well, what's a steep slope?
I think that we have a.
Yeah, I actually finished that in there.
Because personally, like, like this is a strong.
You could specify more things, but at the end of the day, we have to catch on.
Okay.
Well, and the problem is if you get too specific. Well, then, you know, somebody, you can't write regulations that cover every thing. So you have to make them somewhat inclusive so that if things come up that aren't specifically stated, you go, yes.
Okay, like I said.
It all throws to gives authority to look at.
No, I.
We agree with your, your intent.
You're on board. Thank you, and I agree with yours.
Appreciate the input. Thank you. This time. Any other public comments? Hearing none, we'll close public comment. Any other comments from the board? Everyone good with changing additional, additional and buildable as spoke. The explanation.
Just in the explanation, correct.
So therefore they wouldn't have to have another hearing.
Right, all right. A motion.
Jeff tells me I should make a.
Yes.
I'm in favor of amendment six to the. To the articles. It's changed as finding amendment six or something.
Six. Good, good. Motion by Ron Allard. Second by Jeff Brand. Andy Knapp.
Aye.
James Jenison, aye. Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Jeff Brand. All in favor, five oh. Moving forward, thank you. Are you in favor of amendment number seven for the Barrington zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board to amend section seven point three as follows? Seven point three, parents one, a home occupation shall only be conducted totally within the structure of a single-family dwelling and only by the applicant, applicant, occupants of the dwelling. The explanation, the purpose of this amendment is to clarify the original intention of this section. Any board comments? Hearing none, we'll open public comment. Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll close public comment. Or comments?
Make a motion to move amendment seven. With the amended language of seven point three, parents one. To the warrant.
Motion by Andy Knapp, second by Jeff Brand, James Jenison, aye, Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand. Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. In favor, moving on to amendment number eight. The Barrington zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board to amend section seven point three as follows. Seven point three, parents three, no more than five hundred square feet of the dwelling's net living area shall be devoted to such use. Purpose of this amendment is to clarify the original intention of this section and to ensure that the home occupation remains secondary and incidental to the primary residential use. Board comments? Hearing none, we'll open public comment. Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Make a motion to move amendment eight to the warrant for, or make a motion to move, to move amendment eight to, to the warrant for the amendment of seven point three, parents three.
Second, motion by Andy Knapp, second by Jeff Brand, James Jenison, aye, Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand.
Aye.
Yep.
Aye, aye.
All in favor, five oh. Moving number eight. Amendment number nine for the parenting zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board to amend section seven point four as follows. Seven point four, parents seven, the home business, including storage, shall be totally conducted within the designated accessory and dwelling structures, but may occupy an area outside of said structures if this area is adequately screened with fencing or a vegetated buffer. In no case shall the activities of the home business, both inside and outside the accessory and dwelling structures occupy more than two thousand square feet or cover more than ten percent of the lot, whichever is less. The explanation, the purpose of this amendment is to clarify the original intention of this section and to ensure that the home business remains secondary and incidental to the primary residential use.
And I'll point out that they clarified a little bit more that the board has dealt with in town with case that both. Number one, there was an issue with the storage that basically, because this does allow storage. Somebody could have some storage for their home business outside. But the way it's read is they were not including the storage area as part of the business. And, and regularly would be infinitely large. You could, as long as it met the adequately screened, you could have ten trailer trucks sitting out there. And the, and the second part is that there was a concern expressed about smaller properties that there ought to be some limitation on the size. So we, we addressed both of those and clarified.
There was a couple, just, I don't know if, if, you know, area outside the or area outside of said structures. If we should add those words. It says, but may occupy an area outside said structure. Should it be a word in between there and activities of home business?
Outside said structure. Okay.
All right, I'm no English expert, that's for sure. All right, any comments from the board? Hearing none, public comment. Jeffrey, please.
Stephen Jeffrey, one twenty-eight, France Road. Are you including agricultural businesses in this? Are they exempt from these kind of restrictions? Because.
This is the home business.
Yeah, agriculture, I think under state law is exempted.
Yeah.
The only thing we have under the regulations to where agriculture would come in is the keeping of animals with a higher density than what some of. And the reason for that, when you give the planning board our chance to. Agriculture stuff comes in front of the board now by how our regulations.
Yeah, my concern that forestry, you know, is an agricultural.
Right, and that's, that's, that comes under agriculture.
Yeah.
That's a lot. You, I don't think would ever hit the ten percent limit.
And that's why we put the percentage too. For, for the larger lots in town where a larger business would be, you know, suitable. But if you had a half acre and you try to jam a, you know, car dealership in.
Right.
I mean, you would have to have eight acres of material covered up on with stuff.
I haven't even come close to that.
This is for our home business. This is not for agriculture.
No.
Right.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Actually, the definition in zoning on the.
Any other public comments? Hearing none, we'll close public comment. Further comments from the board?
I will make a motion.
I'll make the motion to move amendment nine for warrant as amended for seven point four.
Motion by Andy Knapp, second by Jeff Brand, James Jenison, aye, Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand. Amendment number ten. The Barrington zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board to amend section nine point five, one, parents five as follows. This ordinance shall not prohibit the construction of principal and accessory structures within the buffer zone on lots that legally existed on or before March thirteenth, two thousand and one. The purpose of this amendment is to eliminate the buffer requirement for lots that were improved prior to March thirteenth, two thousand and one. All legally existing lots of record prior to March thirteenth, two thousand and one would be treated the same. Support comments?
This is chair. I just wanted to point out that I think I apparently sent Barbara the previous version, the one that you looked at on the thirtieth. And the change that was made, which the change that I had in my notes, that apparently also seemed to not be correct. But what was posted for public hearing, which says within the buffer zone on, that's on your, on the legal notice, this is what was posted, on unimproved lots that were approved for subdivision by the planning board or on lots which otherwise existed. This is item number ten on the public notice. I think different that. Changes were made. Also the discussion.
Okay, I'm now, I'm really confused. Last meeting discussed. We ended up going to the on lots, but then, Barbara, didn't you say that?
No, I.
The full one.
No, we watched the video. Jamie made the motion. He held up the minutes from the last meeting, pointed to the language that they had. I think Buddy's the one that seconded it. You remember Buddy was the one saying, listen, we talked about this at length in the last meeting. Let's just do what we already decided. That's when Jamie said, I make a motion to do this. Even after you talked about adding on lots for thirty minutes. The motion.
Right, right, so that's.
Which is, which is.
The last time.
Which is this one or that one?
Well, when you say the last time, the last time was a week ago at the planning meeting. We just let you know that we realized that the legal notice was wrong. So you'd have to discuss it at the next hearing on January.
If you wanted to make it that all lots were ten before two thousand and one, you brought up a motion because this was posted as the on lots things, and you decide to change it, you have to hold a second hearing.
I, I'm just trying to get clear on what got posted.
This is.
Public notice. This, that one page.
Which is in, in the vote that happened to move forward to public here.
So it depends on the decision you make tonight. You might have to hold.
So. So if we wanted to go with the other language, we'd have to have another public hearing.
We have to have another public hearing anyways.
Because?
Because of petition.
Yes, that's true. That's true. That didn't get, right, that, that, yeah. Okay.
But the one.
We can.
If you stay with this one, then you wouldn't have to discuss this.
Right, if we just did the or lots.
Which is a different, which is, it's a different change.
Right.
Because what the language that you arrived on after your board. Just did away with all of the, expanded the exemption from current draft.
That is what the board decided. I will note that it was not unanimous.
Right, the on lot doesn't expand the exemption as it's.
Right, it, it just clarifies the current requirement. Current interpretation.
Current interpretation, which is. I, I was one of the ones opposed to the newer language and was in favor of.
Does anybody have, do we have a number of exactly how many lots this affects? I think it's so few.
How many lots?
If we do the current language.
On lots?
Uh.
Yeah, if you do the current language, you're looking at a handful of ones because that.
I mean, less than twenty?
Nine.
I mean, it's, it's literally nothing.
I think it's been two, maybe three the whole time I've worked for the town. So you go townwide, you'd have to look at subdivisions that were approved by the planning board that had a parent house on it that we want to have an expansion. Those buffers would apply to that.
Right, and, and I, that was my impetus for the thing is it literally applies to so few to clarify the language to what's been practiced other than those specific lots, which are, in my mind, under fifty. Then I could be off. That's what I mean. It's, it's so few that it affects. It's not like we're expanding building in the wetland buffer to thousands of lots all over Barrington. And everybody's going to have this new joyous ability to, to fill in the wetlands. It's like fifty people that don't even, oh, they can't do.
Anyways, even if you're going to buffer.
I, 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 I mean, you know, but, but. One hand makes it sound like it's going to be this huge impact to buffers. And the other, my hand is saying, they don't even know that it affects them. It doesn't really affect that many people. To clarify, it seems simple, even though if, it probably won't pass. But I mean, whether it's, it's, whether it's supported or not, it make, the, the impact is so minor for, to have increased clarity at this point is, is, is where my stance.
Two people that I've talked to in the past that's come out that asked about building permits and they had their plans. Feet into the buffer. It up. Land development lots were there, where the planning board, so the buffer didn't apply to them. Have been asked to. Together. These people, if they came forward now, would have to commit to you guys for a nine six. Building permit. For like one or two feet. Didn't apply to them for this change.
They would have to come in now?
Have to come in and ask for a nine six from you. Well, actually, they got to come in anyways because of the petition warrant article that came forward. Now that it's posted for a hearing, it's now in effect until the vote.
Right, the petition one, but not this one. This one would a lot, this one if it's pre.
Depending on how. Depends on how this, this one wouldn't make a change. But right now, they would, if they decide to get a building permit now before March, because of the petition warrant.
Because of the petition.
And asking for a nine six.
Yes.
So there's a possibility of a run on nine six. The, the letter that came from the Conservation Commission, they thought that that maybe was a good idea because it gave oversight from man, beauty. Instead of them just. I guess is how I interpret that. But Kentia, so he can tell you whether that's.
All right, so let's just, let's decide which language we're putting forward.
Don't do the language on the.
If we.
We're going to do the language on the second page, you know, it's our only choice, right?
So, so we can have another meeting.
Well, as, as Connor pointed out, we're going to have to have another public hearing because, in January, because we, we still have to have a public hearing and vote as to what we recommend the petition article.
Any one, any one of these that you make a substantial change on, so.
Steve, you were going to say something?
Yeah, so if we have the language of or on lots, which otherwise existed on or before March thirteenth, two thousand and one, it sounds to me like that would be a lot of lots, all lots that existed prior to that date. Wouldn't that be true? Most lots in town?
If, assuming they all have wetland buffers on.
But, but the.
You know, wetlands to buffer from.
When you remember the explanation that was, they had to add that language.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? Someone was shuffling paper a little more than I could make here over.
I said that if you remember that the reason for the or lots that existed is because it turns out that there were lots that were created prior to the existence of the subdivision regulations. Lots that were divided up and created so that they didn't go through planning board approval. They, they existed prior to the planning board approval. And so you would, if you said, if you only said subdivision, you know, approved by the planning board, it didn't include those lots that were subdivided prior to the existence of.
Hey, this, this one's a tough one for me because, you know, I wouldn't have given this exemption to any lots. So any expansion of it is. I'm, I'm okay clarifying the language as a, as a step. I know John made that case strongly. That's why I voted for it. I'm still going to vote if it's clarified the language, but I don't like it.
Well, yeah, in with respect to the. Well, yeah, and with respect to the-
I don't like it with clarifying it too.
I, I'm okay with clarifying the language as it currently exists, uh, but as I stated, the last time we discussed this, I'm personally not in favor of striking it to make it a all lots. Uh, I, I don't agree.
It, I mean, we can, I hate to hash it out again, it, to me, it seems so, um, if you have a hundred acres and the parent house is left alone, or two acres, the other ninety-eight acres has no buffers, but the two-acre parent house has a buffer, it doesn't make any sense. So you're, you're, it, it's, it's such a, you can disagree with the whole thing as a whole, and I think that makes sense, but to just hold that parent house accountable for some, it, it, it seems nonsensical.
Jamie, that, I hear what you're saying, but to me, the, the, I think the unimproved lot shouldn't have got the exemption.
That's a different argument.
So you're saying it's on, you're saying it's on, you're saying it's on, I'm not muddering the waters, you're saying it's unfair to these guys, it's already, there's already-
No, that's clear.
It's already a buildable lot, house on it. So I, don't tell me it's not buildable. Originally, we didn't wanna make lots unbuildable. You got a house on already, it's built, it, it, by definition, it's buildable, you can build it, you can rebuild it.
Built.
It's built, and you can rebuild on it, you're on the same footprint. So, you know, we didn't wanna make it unbuildable, it's got a house on it, it's not unbuildable by definition, it's done. So, I think, you know, I wouldn't have given the exemption of the unimproved lots.
So you'd make all the unimproved lots-
I would make them comply, whether they, Steve said last meeting, there's no guarantee that your lot will be buildable forever.
Well, that's true, but I, 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 I agree that at the time that the buffers were put in place, that it did make sense, that you would take people that had recently personed property, had been subdivided, part of a subdivision, been approved, you didn't wanna make those things unbuildable. However, going back to the, then, you, you're saying it doesn't make any sense that the, the building, well, I, I disagree. I believe it does make sense, and as I stated the last meeting, I can see that it, in, again, consistent with what the state is conveying by their, their, their laws, that at some period of time, that after-
I don't believe that's relevant. Can you explain to me how it makes sense to put it, put a buffer on a house that's there, but not on a same-sized lot that hasn't been built yet? How those two things rationalize your mind?
The only reason that was done is so that you wouldn't, the, the lot unbuildable by application of the buffers.
Because it was subdivided and built with the purpose of being a, and a, and it was, it was subdivided as an approved building lot at the time, and you take an approved building lot that they've paid taxes on, as an approved building lot, and suddenly render it unbuildable? Are you gonna go back and refund them the value of the lot, plus all the taxes that have been paid on it by changing the-
Well, suddenly is the problem, then do it five-year, you know, days in or whatever.
Right, and, and that's where I'm at is-
What are you doing, what are you doing, all of a sudden you call up everybody and say your lot's unbuildable? Sorry?
Well, that's-
Try selling that?
Five years to peddle it or build on it? Well, that's why I said, I understand why you don't wanna make the, on, lots that are undeveloped, unbuildable, but I don't know how you're distinguishing-
From one lot to another.
But once you've rebuilt this structure, what, at some point in time, there's gotta be a clock when it runs out. You can't just say, for the next hundred years, you don't have to apply-
Articulating a reason why one lot is different from the other lot. Lot A and Lot B and Lot C.
I already told you, I wouldn't have given the exemption, I would have treated both, both lots equally, I wouldn't have given it to either one. So your argument that they were inconsistent is, right with me, I, I wouldn't have given it to either one. I would have, I would have given a five-year window for the undeveloped lots to, to build and get it done. After that, I would have taken the exemption away from them.
And that's fair.
So I, I would have been fair across the board, I wouldn't have given it to anybody.
But we're not fair currently, so to add twenty lots or fifty. So do we did, I mean, I understand the original exemption for undeveloped lots that have been approved for a subdivision, it's exactly what John's talking about, the situation that those people are now, that they're a foot or two into the buffer, but now they gotta go get an exemption, you know, because they gotta, they gotta do a nine-six, because now, now the, uh, the, the new warrant article, the petition article is, is on the books.
Right, so if they come before you, are you gonna deny them for being a foot or two into the buffer, out of a lot that was pre-approved?
I, I-
They would come to us to make a case.
That's right.
You, you can't-
Well, what case is acceptable by your standards, if you don't want anybody to build? No, I am not gonna sit here and say whether I would approve a, a, an application or not ahead of time without hearing a case.
No. I mean, we should definitely make that applicable to tax, tax map one fifteen lot zero 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 five.
Is that, that's you?
That, that would be Ron-
Hey, I changed my vote.
I'm, I'm doing a citizen's petition for, against Ron's property next year. Find him and hit him some.
I already done my, uh-
I'm gonna after you. So.
Well, so, I, I mean, so we've got something up for public, but now we need to make a decision whether we're gonna go forward, we're gonna pull this and go with the other one or not.
Yeah, I did-
And then if we are going forward with the or on lots, then we'll have the public hearing. If we're not gonna go forward with this, and if we wanna go back to the language, which opens things up, which apparently is what the board said we want-
The or on lots is the one that would go forward.
Yeah, that's what-
That's the current posted-
That's what was posted.
Correct. This one is posted one.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, we gotta make a decision here as to whether, now, we're gonna go, I guess we can have a public hearing, if we don't go forward with this, so we're on the next public hearing, we could go with the other language. We could kill the whole.
The way I read, the way, the way I read what was legally posted, it, the way we parse the phrases, uh, "This ordinance shall not prohibit the construction of principal and access, accessory structures within the buffer zone," and then, since there's the or later, that this next phrase can be ignored, uh, so you just skip ahead to on lots which otherwise existed on or before March thirteenth. Do you follow what I'm saying? So, the or makes each clause independent.
Right, and it was only adding on lots, because people were unclear as to what, what the, or, uh, which otherwise existed then. It, it was applied to lots, and so it's just to be specific, that is, to lots, that's all.
Um, let's open public comment. I know we have, uh, two here to speak, um, you guys fight amongst yourselves, let's go first. We have a letter from Mr. Grossman, Conservation Commission. How are you?
I'm great, I'm still Ken Grossman. I'm still chair of the Conservation Commission. Like you, we had a long talk about this. Probably had less information than you had, but we still had a long talk, and we didn't exactly take the vote on it. I just really reflect, reflect, uh, the comments that were made at meetings, uh, thoughts that were expressed. So, me just, I wrote, "It's December ninth, twenty twenty-one meeting, the Conservation Commission discussed the proposed change to section nine point five point one, five of the wetland buffer order. We understand the planning board's motivation for this change, or at least I thought I did before, concerning lots pre-existing, extension of wetland buffers fifty feet on March thirteen, two thousand. Nonetheless, as the mission of the Conservation Commission is to protect the natural resources of the town of Barrington, and Barrington's wetlands and wetland buffers are critical natural resources, we cannot endorse this proposed change. While the law requires respect, property rights, especially as it applies to properties that exist before changes made to ordinance, this proposal does not advance the goals of the wetland buffer ordinance itself, as stated in nine point one parentheses three, which are to prevent adverse impact to wetlands that provide flood protection, a big deal nowadays, recharge of groundwater supply, augmentation of stream flow during dry periods, habitat for plants, fish, or wildlife, or commerce, recreation, or aesthetic enjoyment. Now, we understand that making no change require an applicant to ask for relief from the planning board via a conditional use permit as per section nine point six, or an appeal to the zoning board. That's not always a bad thing. In the past, this process allowed the commission and the planning board to recommend changes to property owners' plans that reduce the impact of the incursion into the wetland buffer. Such a review can enhance the health of the wetland in question. Several years ago, the Conservation Commission proposed changes to the ordinance to give the planning board further guidance, guidance to make such recommendations. Recently, town planner Marcia Gases brought together members of the commission and the planning board to further this goal. Jeff was there, so was I. Um, as an outside consultant was not available to draft these proposed changes, project waits in abeyance. The commission also sponsored an educational program at the Barrington Library back then, which argued about the value of wetlands and the obligation of landowners to be good stewards, regardless of what ordinance require their compliance. Whether or not the planning board chooses to go forward with this recommendation to end five point five, ask the board itself in the coming years to develop a more detailed wet protection ordinance, genuinely meets the goal stated in section nine point one parentheses three. The Conservation Commission stands ready to collaborate on that. We understand that protecting wetlands and buffers cannot be accomplished entirely by the force of local ordinances. Together through the planning office and code enforcement office, we might also provide applicants for building projects with information regarding the prevention of runoff pollutants and fertilizers fermenting wetland streams and water bodies. The Conservation should be deadly, such a-
Sorry? They said, thank you for reading that, so I didn't-
Quite welcome.
Um, yes, that's in the packet.
Has that committee not been meeting? Uh, how long has it been since, uh, that committee has not met?
I'm gonna guess before COVID. Uh, do you have, when the last time that committee met, you asked, Steve?
Can't remember yet, can you?
Been a while.
I'm gonna be- Say a couple of years.
Prior to COVID, yeah.
One of the complicating factors may have, I remember today. I think at the same time, state legislature was-
Yes. That's correct.
So, what happened was, we had a consultant to take money to work on this.
Right, we, we tried to hire consultants to do that, and, and, uh, but the state had a, had their own commission, they said they were working towards a solution, which about a year ago, they came out and said, well, this time we, we can't make a decision, and they produced nothing for statewide guidance, so.
This was the time when they were trying to deal with all the issues with Great Bay and the runoff and, uh, um, probably the nutrient loading and stuff that was going in Great Bay, right?
Yeah.
It was probably about three years ago, I think, when you guys were having that discussion then, because that's when that whole issue come up and they were working on it.
Well, if the state, it can't, if the state's not able to deal with this, and like they said they were going to, then it comes back to us, we should proceed with the committee.
Yeah.
Come on down.
Well, I, I yielded to Donna, is she still on the committee?
Um, I would, as an alternate, I'm guessing she's probably not, and, and as Jeff said, I think COVID probably put the screws to it.
Stuff that's been occupied.
But let's, let's, uh, after this is, we parse this stuff out, we can put together and talk about reconvening that, and, uh, you know, virtual group, and discussing what can be done there. And I, and I think my recollection of the time was, we weren't gonna overstep the state's guidelines, we were kinda waiting, um, for what their guidelines were gonna be, and I don't know if that's, would still be the case or not, but-
Well, but the state basically came to an impasse on her own, so.
That's, as we did.
No, but we didn't wanna be in conflict if they were gonna go ahead and issue, uh, right, guidance or regulations, but they haven't.
And if you wanna go straight by state statute-
That's right.
And if you wanna go strictly by state statutes, the state does not, they have wetland areas, but they don't have wetland buffers. Um, only municipalities have wetland buffers, and the state says that, uh, municipalities have a right to enforce the rules in there, but the state doesn't actually have wetland buffers.
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware.
Thank you.
Just two handouts together.
Steven Jeffrey, one twenty-eight transfer, Barrington. This is at least the third time I've addressed this specific issue, and it's always the same turn, in that, it gives permission to violate those, well, um, no, we, we all like to have binary choice, but, zoning ordinance has been described as a matrix. It's a little more complicated. I'm gonna try not to read all of this, but, um, planning board incorrectly states the purpose is to provide relief for improved lots, and that they be treated the same. The town has stated, current zoning ordinance is interpreted to include the term improved, and consistent with tech, past practices that exempt some improved lots, clients with the wetland buffer restrictions. Our zoning ordinance prohibits this application of a buffer exemption in numerous places. The courts have ruled that zoning, zoning ordinance language cannot be inserted, uh, or that zoning ordinance cannot be inserted where the creators did not see fit to include it. The original provision was created to extend the five-year exemption, provided by RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine, the lots had recently been approved. It was just so they wouldn't negatively impact the development opportunities on those In two thousand and nine, I demolished an existing building on my property and replaced it with a garage, and I was required to comply with the wetland buffer restriction. So I moved, I actually was in a smaller footprint, that I moved further away from anything that could be considered a wetland. So any suggestion that, you know, existing buildings or existing lots are exempt, you know, is ridiculous. And my lot's from eighteen fifty, you know, if I go by that kinda logic, I shouldn't be required to comply with anything, but, um, the effective date of the current ordinance is two thousand and five, and it's been amended about twelve times since then. You know, and specifically the ordinance is, they're the safeguard of the natural resources, if it's lakes, river, streams, wetlands, first, next. Our interpretation is, the ordinance shall be interpreted as a minimum one. Doc, that was on to, prior that, should a conflict exist between or among standard requirements, whichever is a standard or requirement shall control. RSA six seventy-four fourteen says the same thing. And article three one one requires the permit instructions to not be issued unless it complies with the entire zoning ordinance. Section five two, have an existing building that was built legally, you can keep it, but if you wanna expand it, and it conflicts with the ordinance, you've got an issue, you're gonna need to get a mayor. The town can't just issue a building permit if you're gonna violate the zoning. And it's on to say nonconformous use may be changed, or may not be changed, to another nonconforming use extended or enlarged to occupy a greater area of land than was occupied at the date of the adoption or amendment of the ordinance. And, you know, something for the planning board to consider, it says, uh, except this provided in section five three five below, there is no section five three five, I think it got changed to five four. You might take that up for some house. Nine five one, there's a buffer area of fifty feet is required from the edge of any wetland. Vision and bulk, the ordinance was adopted March thirteenth, two thousand and one, and is effective from that date, and that means everything going forward has to comply with that. And if the, you know, a wetland exists, whether or not delineates or not. Then nine five one two, there's an existing building within the buffer area may be repaired or replaced, provided that the new or repaired structure, any informal services do not extend further into the buffer area than the footprint. Provided that the new or repaired structure with any informal services does not extend further into the buffer area than the footprint. Now, what inspired me to get involved in this, there was a. Existing lot on Micah Point Road with a house on it. The owners proposed to demolish the house and increase the size of the house. Or impacted wet buffer. Inquired by the town. How that was possible without a variance. I've got a response that it was nine, five, one, five exempted it. Nine, five, one, five does not exempt it. I've got a response that it was in nine, five, one, five was. Terpered into. It doesn't say that. It only refers to unimproved lots. The RSA six seventy four nineteen requires any alteration of a building or change of use shall be subject to the current zoning order. The planning board has approved, was proposed changing nine, five, one, five. I think I have this right, but I'm not sure. The ordinance shall not prohibit construction principal and accessory structures within the buffer zone on lots that legally existed on March thirteenth, two thousand and one. This involves an awful lot of property in Barrington. You know, that every exist, pre-existing lot, including my own. I mean, probably half my property as well. It doesn't mean I can just build any old place on that property. I can't anyway, because I have easement on it. That aside. I would still have to comply with a zoning ordinance. You know, for people that already have an existing house, nobody's going to make them tear it down or move it back out of the buffer. But if they want to expand on it. They're really going to need a variance. And I don't even want to get into nine, six, but you really can't use that for that purpose. Now, problem, what you've done is the zoning ordinance defines the term lot. Lot is an area of land or any part thereof that can legally be developed under the terms of this ordinance. Well, wetland buffer can't be developed. So you're saying that this ordinance shall not prohibit developing on an area that can't be developed. Which to me is just nonsense. It's a, you know, it's a meaningless statement. It's irrelevant. So I think the planning board should withdraw the proposed amendment. You know. Nine, five, one, five should be spoke. Twenty years have passed since the article was passed. And sufficient time for an empty property owners that bought an unimproved lot moved by the planning board. They've exited, I suspect there's very few of those lots left available. Regardless. And I think they got a pretty good case to make before the ZBA. If they want to get a variance. Otherwise, I'm not sure I would give in people, you know, unrestricted. Development options in wetland buffers. And that's a pretty poor place to build anyway. I got a neighbor across the street that's replaced the floor a couple of times according to them. It's on a lot that I documented the wetland. Management was incorrectly done. And they're, they're like ten feet from the wetland buffer. That was incorrect, delineated as well. So anyway. My preference would be for the planning board to just decide to get rid of nine, five, one, five. It's really not applicable anymore. And it conflicts with all the other provisions to the ordinance. Unless you want to change all those. It's still going to be, you know. The other parts of the ordinance are more restrictive and you can't, but anyway. All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Jeffrey, before you go.
Yeah.
I understand you, uh, you served on the planning board in the past. I'm interested in the intent of the, of the drafters of this, of this ordinance. Do you have, were you involved in the writing of this ordinance and what was your intent?
Well, not in two thousand and one. But it came up. Sometime after that, Marsha proposed that all lots of record would be exempt from the wetland buffer. I said, well, that's nuts, because as soon as you, planning board approves a lot, it's a lot of record.
This was discussed in two thousand and twenty.
Maybe, maybe not, I don't know. Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
But I certainly was involved in the hearing. Right. Right.
Do you have any insight into the board's intent at the time?
To, to change it to all lots of record?
Uh, I meant, I meant the original, the original drafting of why nine point one, five parentheses five exists in the first place.
Well, it was just prior to that, some subdivisions had been approved with a thirty-five foot setback. And the developers and owners of some of those lots were concerned that they have to comply with the change in the ordinance, so. I guess in deference to them, the planning board. Crafted nine, five, one, five, but they had a five-year exemption anyway under state law. So I think it was just a political appeasement. And just to.
Mr. Jeff.
Swayed.
So the statements, the reason why it got changed is nine, five, one, one. Applied to off parts of record that were around when that setback was required. And after that, they decided to grandfather those lots and the lots previous to that to those requirements. And only move forward with the ones on fifty-foot buffer on the lots created after two thousand and one. Other than the lots that were already developed at the time of the subdivision. So that was the intent of what happened back then. I was on the board then. You're asking someone for what the board's intent was that was not on the board, which is kind of irrelevant.
Okay.
You done?
Yep. Good. Thank you so much. Other public comments? You know, public comment?
So with all the terminology and parsing of phrases. I went back to the video on October nineteenth to try to understand exactly what everyone's position was a little more clearly. So word for word from about one hour fifty-five minutes and Mr. Hawkins was saying, quote. Some lots were created and people would come in to get a building permit and the house would be built. Then they would come back to build the garage afterwards. My interpretation on this and my predecessors. Was those lots were not improved at the time of subdivision. So those were unimproved lots, so the buffer didn't apply to them. Close quote. So John. So John, when that, does that mean that you interpret? That what was meant by unimproved lots can improve, can include lots that have been improved after subdivision? Is that correct?
So beating it exactly what it says now. It says this ordinance shall not prohibit the construction of principal and accessory structures within the buffer zone. On unapproved lots that were approved for subdivision by the planning board. So because of that being said, the lot was unapproved when they were approved for subdivision by the planning board. Then it goes on to say, or otherwise, otherwise lots legally existed on and before two thousand and one. So those were the ones that were discussed that those were lots that not, were not approved by the planning board. They were approved by, when you used to just take a piece of paper, draw some lines and record the registry of deeds. So those lots would still be exempt from the wetland buffers. And that's how I interpreted it. I explained it exactly at that meeting, the same way I am now. And that's still how I interpret this if there's no change made.
So let me ask you a question, though. Looking at the email exchange between you and Mr. Jeffrey. So if we add or on lots, does that mean or on unimproved lots which otherwise existed?
The, the changes to make, Mr. Jeffrey's argument is.
No, I don't want an explanation of Mr. Jeffrey's argument. I understand his argument.
Why I was trying to explain to you when I answered his email, he was interpreting it as if once the lot was felled. So let's say a house was put on it last year. And then they come back in and ask for a garage this year. Even though the lot was not developed at the time of subdivision, it's now a developed lot, so therefore. It's a developed lot that was approved by the planning board because it got developed afterwards. Well, my interpretation of how it. Was they had to be developed at the time of subdivision.
Okay, you didn't answer my question.
I think I did in the answer.
What's your question? Yeah, what's the question? I'm done.
All right, let me see if I understand your interpretation. Paraphrase now, John. So the way you interpret it. All lots that existed before March two thousand and one are exempt from our fifty-foot wetland buffer rule. Regardless of the development that occurs on those lots, as long as the new lots, as long as new lots are not created. And this is effective forever. Is that the way you understand it to be?
That's not what I said.
I, I know, I'm rephrasing it to see if I got it.
No, what you rephrased is incorrect from what I said.
Okay.
But I said, it doesn't, it only applies to lots. That had druts on, because if you read the definition of developed in the zoning. It says lots that have a primary structure already on it. So at the time of subdivision, if there was a primary structure on that lot. Then the buffers apply by how I read that. If it was not developed at the time of the subdivision, then it doesn't apply because of what it says. And then it says, or other lots that were created. For that, so therefore. Lots that were not approved by the planning board that are lots of records because. They didn't need planning board approval before the planning board, those two are also exempt. That's how I read that, because it's actually written in two sections as to explain what both of those conditions are.
All right, well, in two thousand and one, uh, that's when.
Can I interrupt for a second?
Yes.
I don't know as though we're arguing how John will interpret. If nothing changes, we're not arguing how John's going to interpret things in the future. He's going to continue interpreting things the way he believes they're, they're understood. And I agree with him in that because he's the, that's his job. And there's mechanisms to argue that. If we want to have a meeting and argue with John about how he should enforce what's. What we pass. So we got to decide, are we doing nothing? And he's going to continue to do what he's been doing. Are we going to change the vote on the language as it's written here? And it'll, it'll expand it to a few more lots. Some say a tremendous amount of lots, but I think a few more lots. Or are we going to change this altogether and put forward something that he's going to defend or enforce as we write it? Those are the options, not parsing out how John's done it, how one person interprets it, you, me, and. Three thousand other citizens. That, I think it's irrelevant how he's interpreting.
Correct. I brought this to the board because I wanted the board to make it black and white, take the discrepancy out of it. That's the reason why it's in front of the board.
I mean, there's two, this we discussed last time. I mean, there's two ways to go. Clarify the language so it's clear what's being done now. Or change it so that John does not do what he's doing now, but. But make it clear what he should do.
Right.
So we, last meeting, we, we didn't seem to be able to be on the same page to change what's being done. We decided to clarify the language. That's where we ended up. So, and I'm okay with that. I mean, it, it, it's no change, but it's clearer. I think that's the responsibility of the board and we should do that. If we want to change it to something else. I think it's, I think that's another discussion, because we weren't, we weren't there last meeting. Everybody was on the same page to what we wanted it to be. And I think if we just clarify to make it clear to everybody what's going on now. That is an acceptable outcome in my mind. It doesn't give you the up I want, but at least it makes it clear to everybody and it clarifies the language.
And that's how I feel as well.
Thing we, I think we have an obligation to do. If we could all agree on what we should be, that'd be even better, but at least make it clear is, is a minimum requirement, I think.
Yeah, I, and I don't think, I think we've got two very extreme opposites on the board with, 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 with the couple. And then some, maybe we'll land somewhere in the middle, but I agree with you on voting on clarification is the best. Path forward at this point.
And I don't think they closed the door to discussing this further.
Of course not, no.
We just clarify the language we're doing now and then continue to discuss it going forward. Not the other world.
Steve.
So I believe we have a responsibility to honor the spirit and intent of the authors, the authors had when they drafted this ordinance. And we, we only hear, so far we've only heard. Insight on what the intent was from Mr. Hawkins. So it seems to me.
We are, we are the authors.
You personally were on the board at the time?
No, yeah.
I'm here to argue the point of what was written and some of the intent.
Because we're the authors.
We're asking you to change it to make it black. This hearing can help. So to keep going back and saying my interpretation is wrong and that's not what the others meant, so relevant.
You change the language to what you wanted to mean as we as the authors and the citizens will vote on and approve it. Right?
Right, but this whole thing started with a question of interpretation and I'm, I think the intent of the original authors is relevant. I, I think the, the unimproved lot language was a matter of restriction of how broadly this could be applied.
Well, John was a part of the planning board back.
Right, but now we've got also, we've got people.
Consistently since then.
And then you've got five years, twenty years, you know, now you're interjecting what people's opinions on timeframe should be, so. It, it's not clear and the author, you know, and again, we are in the role to write. The new zoning and have it approved or not approved and.
I think it's, it's, it's upon us to have clear language so that everyone knows. Not only John, but everybody else understands what these things mean.
So do we agree that item ten is written in such a way that it clarifies? The language that we want to move that forward on page three, not on page, I mean, on page one rather, not on.
I make a motion that we make the zoning ordinance more fair, clear, and internally consistent by amending nine point five, one parentheses five. To remove all words and punctuation, effectively deleting that section of the ordinance.
Motion by Steve Diamond.
To remove the ordinance?
Nine point five, one parentheses five.
To me, I think there's only, today, there's only one path, clarify the language or not. I think changing the rules is not going to happen. I think that's a, that's a bigger discussion to have it another day.
We are changing the rules. We're talking about changing the rules anyway.
We're talking about.
Right, we are.
Clarifying the language to remain what's been interpreted as now. It's not changing the rules. Let James make the thing about no second.
Point of, right. Point of order, there's been a motion on the table. Is there a second for it? Not hearing a second, motion falls. Back to discussion on language to move forward. I will make a motion to move forward item ten as written. Page one language, this ordinance shall not prohibit the construction of principal and accessory structures within the buffer zone on unimproved lots. That were approved for subdivision by the planning board or on lots which otherwise existed on and before March thirteenth, two thousand and one. That is the correct language, right? A second. Second, that motion falls. What else? I have a wild idea. Do we want to, do we want to look at being a sunset clause on this? And proposing that to the voters?
I like that idea. I think it should have been five years in the, drafted back in two thousand and one.
But it, but that gives you adequate time to investigate who may have these lots. Note, if it passes, notice them that they're unimproved lots. Will be, will be held accountable and applicable to all buffer rules and regulations that aren't sunsetted out of here. Specifically the nine point five point one parents five. And then it, it allows all of it to move forward in a way that's. I would want legal advice prior to signing, I, I, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote for it, but I would, um. But I mean, I guess we have Carol here who helps draft this and do this, so do you have some? All-knowing and wisdom here to guide us through this?
I can only say that I have never seen such a provision in, in wetland ordinance. That doesn't mean it doesn't exist somewhere, but I've never come across one.
A sunsetting provision?
Yeah, yeah.
Have you ever seen an exemption? And then it gives exemption.
Exemption's written into a lot of rules and regulations.
Yeah.
I mean, it's short and sweet of it, there's no motion to move this forward, then it doesn't, it comes off, it comes off.
Guys.
Comes off and we deal with it next year and it stays the way it is and. John deals with it the way he's been dealing with it and the language stays the same.
Now, because of the petition warrant article. All lots have buffers until they go much. If it passes, then all lots will have buffers. If it passes, then all lots will have buffers. All the time moving forward and it basically is going to end up nullifying nine point five one one. Uh, that gives you the thirty five foot setback on those lots. Lots were created by exempting out, taking the buffer section out and making it apply to all lots. And that would apply to them watching that thirty, that thirty five percent back. It's non-existent because I have to follow the motion.
So that's, that's, I think it seems like the most likely path forward and I'm also open to, and I don't think it'll happen tonight, is we give them five choices. Ron's amendment where, you know, everybody lives in their cave until we decide to kick them off. Start with Lake, we start with Lakefront property first.
Positive manner.
To move inland.
Specifically, that one fifteen lot zero 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 five.
And we move inland, um, but um, I mean, is that an option to give five choices? How do you want it nine point five to read? Nothing?
Well, the, I don't understand.
Problem is, is you would, it would have to say the highest, however you did it, it would have to say the highest vote count wins. Because anything that becomes a majority becomes a passing regulation, you could create all kinds of conflict.
Don't make a whole bunch of things, just let one.
Yeah.
I don't understand the comment that if nine five one five would kill, that that would negate nine five one.
Because if buffer goes on all lots, every single lot would have a fifty four.
No, if you eliminate.
Eighty five foot setback.
No, it's an exception. It is under nine five one is the exception. So it says that on lots created after March eleventh nineteen ninety seven, before March thirteenth, two thousand one, no structure shall be closer than thirty five. So that's an exception to.
Yeah, because the other one, they're taking it right out.
Right. So I don't understand that.
I missed it. I was thinking saying that buffer aren't allowed. Apply to all lots after two. All lots.
I'm fine with the sunsetting approach.
An exception would still be in it.
That's going to be an all night discussion if we're trying to sunset approach. We're all up for an all nighter.
It'll be simpler for the voters to, for us to not do anything on the language we're working on and because there's already going to be the petition article. It, it would be less complicated for them to only deal with one thing. And if we're looking at dealing with this in future years anyway.
That assumes stupidity on the citizens' part, which I don't adhere to.
I decided it was simpler. I didn't say it was stupid.
Well, no, he's saying, he doesn't believe, he doesn't believe in stupidity.
You think that people can only deal with one thing at a time? That's what he said. It's simpler and easier for people to understand, one thing at a time. I don't need to be.
What happens?
At a time, that's why I proposed five things. Give them five choices to choose from. What do you want it to read? Nothing? No buffers? Increased buffers? You know, remove it? I think choices are.
If the ballot is fifty different questions, I mean, i- if by your reasoning, should we go even further and like have, not have a board and just say, hey, what do you want to do? Let's just have a free forum, whatever, you know?
The fact of the matter is, if the petition amendment passes, it kills the whole thing and there's nothing to fix. That actually does simplify things, not just for the voters, but for us. If it does not pass, then we put forth the effort to fix what it is now and have it fixed.
You're saying drop it this year and then look at it next year if it doesn't pass?
And see whether the petition amendment passes or not. Because we can do whatever we want, but if the petition amendment passes, all of this is for naught. Well, to, to Andy's point, if they both would have passed, how does that, how does that affect it?
That would be.
So I, you know.
And just quickly looking, um, New Hampshire is actually one of the states that have repealed the sunset laws dating back as far as two thousand and ten, so that might not be the best approach.
Yeah, and I mean, with the current climate, I think, I guess, I'm, I'm fine with tabling it. That was my suggestion with no headway on either. I mean, we have language that we approved that nobody seconded on. We have language that Steve proposed that nobody seconded on, which is the amended uh, the citizen petition version, so I think the only way to move forward, end it tonight, is to drop it.
I mean, unless somebody wants to.
I'll second that motion. To drop it?
Don't.
Second it, it's a lie.
Nobody seconded the motion.
No.
That's what I'm saying.
Right. There was no motion, that's why I'm saying it's. Oh, there was. So I said the second drop. There is no motion.
So item ten is not go forward. All right, well, that was fun.
That was effective.
Do that again soon. Now, um, item eleven.
Quickly followed by a sharp stick in the eye.
Short discussion before I read that one off. Is this not reflective of this? Yes, okay. So this table is. Okay. Right.
Because you voted last time to not do it. But that's the question.
I'll read the public notice, uh, number, uh, eleven to amend article nineteen by changing bed and breakfast from a permitted use to permitted by conditional use permit in the village, town center and regional commercial districts. And the explanation, the amendment is to allow more planning board and a butter oversight into a use that can have a varying impacts depending on the neighborhood and the intensity of the use. Board have any comments on that?
Well, I would just, I thought I, I must have. Must have been an oversight on my part. Unintended, I'm brought to say is, I thought that I, I had said that on the explanation, the purpose of this amendment uh, more planning oversight in above input. Because the butters don't.
That may well be on the corrected version that's in my computer.
Okay.
I will confirm that.
But I, but I. Like that language.
Yeah, I just think that's more appropriate.
Everybody, Steve, you like that? Corrections? Just wish. All right, uh, we'll open that one to public comment. I'll close public comment saying none. Motion to move amendment eleven.
Make a motion to move I am, uh, amendment eleven to amend article nineteen for bed and breakfasts to by the condition of use. There's a warrant on.
Motion by Jeff Brand, second by Ron Allard, Andy Knapp.
Aye.
James Jenison, aye. Steve Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Uh, Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Jeff Brand.
Right.
All in favor, five zero to move forward. Number twelve. The amend. That one make fun?
Yes.
Okay. To amend article nineteen by changing drugstore from a permitted use to permitted by conditional use permit in the village, town center and regional commercial districts. Um. I think that, that's. So we're missing, we'll use the same language as the previous one, the purpose of this planning oversight and a butter input as use that in use that can have varying impact depending on the neighborhood and intensity of the use. Um, uh, comments?
Just to, to vote for this is to vote to make it a good use? I am against that. I think we have a, we have a walk town center. Services. Drugs was pretty high in the list.
Or bed and breakfast there.
You can still get that. It just means that they're required to come before the board and request permission to do it. What it prevents is you get, from getting a massive like chain store, a CVS, a W- Rite Aid, a Walgreens plopped up right near downtown.
And, and more to the point, you don't get one. You usually get three competing. You get Walgreens, you get CVS, you get Rite Aid. Two go out of business and leave empty buildings and one survives. And so that's my intent to, you know, if we get one, I'm happy, happy for the residents. But when the second and third one come in, I want to have the ability to say, we've got one. Thank you. Appreciate it. But.
Not so sure that can be no use.
Yeah. Well, I don't think legally, I don't think you can do that.
You know, I think we have Walgreens down in Lee. I think we have a Rite Aid down in Lee. I don't think, I'm not too worried about another drugstore. Drugstores showing up willy nilly, they're located in the middle of Barrington. I just don't see that, that an issue, I'm concerned.
Two oh two and farming, I mean, uh, in, you know, Sanford and you see Dollar General, you know, a new Autozone, I, I just, and I'm, that was my intent and purpose.
I know.
I'm going to get it too.
Of course you understand that your argument that it's unlikely to happen, actually are you against opposing it because it will make a big difference whether it's it's permitted or conditionally used because.
No, I mean, I, I think that if we look, talking about, you know, walkable downtown and stuff like that, the services that people want should be there and I think that we should encourage a drugstore to go down there.
Yeah, actually I agree with you. Well, as I saw, as I saw the three family owned care pharmacies in walkable downtown areas get closed down for the bigger box store versions outside of walking distance of downtown Dover and Rochester, I think that's not realistically what happens in the world. The big box stores take over mom and pops, nobody can walk there. A nice mom and pop drugstore downtown in Calif's, great. I'd, you know, I'd be all for that, but I think the big box stores go to the cheaper lot halfway down the road. It's not walkable anyways. And then they just come in and it doesn't look like a nice walkable downtown anymore.
Last time a mom and pop pharmacy opened within fifty miles.
That's what I'm saying. They ran care pharmacies out of business.
But I'm saying, so.
Within, within five hundred miles of anywhere.
Right, it's not going to happen.
But they don't open up in walkable downtown areas is my point.
But they're not going to, they're still not going to open. I don't think that. Trying to open a drugstore.
Sorry, interrupt. Uh, Jamie, I, I think you're right about, uh, there's a tendency that if you have one, then you ended up with three because of just the way the economics work about competition or that's where everyone knows to go for their medications. Uh, and it, it gets a little crazy. That's what's happening in Dover in some spots.
Yeah, and they're never in walkable, they're still, you know, outside, usually on the perimeter because the land is cheaper.
I completely disagree with that statement.
You give me an example?
I think if you pull one drugstore in, it does not bring other drugstores, it prevents drugstores from going in.
It's counterintuitive, sure, Ron. But it's true.
You know, it is true, although the state.
I, I know. I remember.
They actually had some. In their purpose and state licensing about having, that's usually what happens. However, whatever they're doing, I agree, it doesn't appear to be worth it.
This, this stuff is probably likely to go down in front of the, uh, town hall, the new town hall probably. I suppose this, you know, will.
No, those ones are already, uh, designated. They, we've already talked about them.
Well, really, is these uses for a order, they're the commercial spaces that got, commercial space, yeah. You want.
That would generate some, absolutely. My intention is, let it be known, is that when people, when, when outside entities look at it, it's not permitted, they hesitate. Same with gas stations, they hesitate. When it says permitted, they come to your town looking and I don't want them coming here looking.
It's not going to say non-permitted, it's going to say it requires.
Correct, but I think.
You're right, it is.
From a developer's standpoint, I think they look at that extra step and say, uh, when I can go to this place that is permitted and throw up another kombis and another one next to it.
Right, I, I.
They're going to go to the easy, the low hanging fruit.
It is a flag, which is why I agree with Ron with drugstores. I don't want.
I know, I don't know how that one made it and the two gas stations didn't, but.
Donald, Donald flipped on us.
Well, no, and two people weren't here, so I lost my help.
Yeah, you didn't.
Lost my support.
Sorry.
You and Andy, Andy M. But, all right, well, uh, I think we've lamented. I mean.
You've cried in, in your soup enough.
Yeah, and I'm not.
Well, take a vote.
I'll make a motion to, uh, move this one. It will be beautiful and people love it and the people will keep moving here because we, me and Andy, prices will skyrocket. Land will be worth a fortune and everybody will love it.
We all love it, but little beautiful night's gas station, the tattoo place, the white abandoned building, that's Jamie's vision of Barrington.
We're going to have some wetland.
Right, so far so.
Actually, judging by the level of swings, we're going to have some drive that we can develop here pretty soon. It's all right.
Jamie, you were making a motion. I heard a motion.
I'm, I'll make a motion to move, I'll make a motion to move number twelve forward.
I second that.
Motion by James, second by Steve Diamond, Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Uh, uh, Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
Ron Allard.
Aye.
James Jenison, aye. Um, so three to two.
Diamond, jay.
Yeah, Steve was a yay. Oh, he's second, I'm sorry. Hang it off. Uh, three to two, what's that? Do we need a majority?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, it goes. Pass the rule.
All right. Number thirteen. Put his phone number on there. Um, the Barrington, number thirteen, to amend section four point two point two parents three by increasing the minimum lot size for multifamily housing in the village district from an additional ten thousand square feet per unit to additional forty thousand square feet per unit. The purpose of this amendment is to encourage more mixed use commercial development in the village district by facilitating economies of scale and make it advantageous to a developer to include special uses.
So in Jamie's vision, mixed use, but no place to go.
Barrington is all about.
They can't move in downstairs. Not a drugstore.
We are a driving and pedal bike community. We like to bike far and drive further. Right, Steve?
Maybe we can get it down.
Sure, should we open up the public hearing?
Yes, uh, open up public hearing. Hearing none, we'll close public hearing. Board comments?
Uh, this one, I'm in favor of, I have problems with forty thousand square feet.
I think you two came up with this one, didn't you?
No, no, I, I've been consistently saying forty thousand, step too far.
In fact, unfortunately, we ignored buddy who proposed twenty five thousand and, which is more reasonable than something that I would closer to.
I could, I could have lived with twenty five thousand.
I could have twenty, I think would have been appropriate.
So forty thousand, the reason we talked about forty thousand is it discourages um, this stockyard style housing like we're seeing plopped in here. It does not fit the character or the vision of Barrington in our village district.
And so at eighty thousand square feet, hundred thousand square feet, but you know, we've got to be reasonable. I think twenty thousand is, or twenty five thousand also is a, is a disentive.
Use the word reasonable, what's that reason based on?
I just think going from ten to forty is pretty arbitrary. I'm not telling you something with precious.
I think.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, I think the forty thousand is based on the, uh, the area you would need to build another unit. So by not increasing the density and it, it, it's a land preserving measure as well as a density decreasing measure, I guess would be my interpretation of it.
But remember, there was a discussion about, I think all of us, I mean, they met the rules, but the new eighty units down there by the Irving, you know, is, is kind of what prompted us or everybody said, yeah, I don't know that we want to do that again.
And the twenty down by the school.
Well, I'm.
Forty, yeah, twenty on each, sorry, twenty on each.
But we also said, so what would that, if you changed it from ten to forty, what would be the impact? And it turned out that you'd end up with clusters of three units. I forgot how many that would end up being.
Nowhere near the quantity.
I, I know, so it's, that's a pretty drastic change. And I, I just, I don't, I don't know if it was done. For me personally, it seems like a big team.
Well, the conversation was, it drove it more to the idea of having commercial space on the bottom which focused on the long-term vision and the actual case that we used in that case was Dove Development doing what they did with the commercial development on the bottom, which gave them the ten or twenty units up of.
Yeah, but, uh, so we, the goal to make that happen, but then Jimmy won't let him put anything on the ground floor.
What's that?
Jimmy won't let him put anything on the ground.
It's nothing, none of it's prohibited, like it's a conditional use, or you've got to choose a conditional permitting. It, it drives the fact that if we want them to focus on building a downtown that has an, that has any purpose to it, that you have to have a component of commercial real estate to it.
I agree with that, but I think.
If you, if you don't, otherwise what happens is you're gonna have all this, you're gonna have these massive residential clusters that all they do is impact the burden of the town from a tax standpoint because it becomes a school impact, it becomes a municipal impact. And.
Okay, so.
Every way, shape, and fashion.
I understand that, but you're saying, you're changing it from 10 to 40, driving, you know, uh, the multi-use buildings. So what district do we already have zoning in place for, for where we have multi-use development? That's Town Center. The, the, the Christmas stuff development. So what are the rules in Town Center? It says minimum lot size, non-residential is 20,000. Yeah. So what's the minimum lot size that you're using to calculate for the PUD?
The Town Center has a reduced lot size requirement on it anyway.
With 50% of it be commercial, 25% residential, and 25% open to city use. Dove One actually got extra density from the zoning board. That's why there's more housing there. Um, powers to explain all the new.
Right, but the, but the minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet, right?
Or a commercial lot.
So to me, the, the mixed use is, I think it's a, it's a good aspirational goal, but I don't, I frankly, I have some trouble seeing how realistic it is. I mean, is, what are you gonna put in, what are you gonna put there that is walkable or, or, you know, makes a walkable neighborhood and all that kind of things? I think it's.
That's where you end up with your barber shops, your coffee shops, your little convenience stores, the things that drive a neighborhood.
Well, we already have the convenience stores, the gas station that Jamie has.
You want to go visit.
We have a Milo's, we have a, we already have places already downtown. We have a Kalif's.
So you're arguing to make everything under the limit again and just build tons of houses?
No, I think that, I think that the stated goal to go to 40,000 square feet to drive mixed use is, I don't see that as.
It doesn't mean a direct connection. But it doesn't mean you have to do mixed use. You can do all residential. You're just gonna have to do it at a lower density.
I agree with that. I'm, I'm agreeing with that.
That's all what this is.
I just think 40 is too far.
I think 40, doesn't 40 fall in line with general residential, neighborhood residential?
Eighty.
40,000 are additional one bedroom.
Right.
50,000 for two bedrooms or more additional units. So. See, this is still gonna be less restrictive than the other ones because the 80,000 is two bedroom or more. With this one, you can get a two-bedroom with just 40,000.
The, the goal, the goal really is, you know, is, is to not have that happen again. For 80 units in, uh, that complex style that is immediately, once it's built, is destructive to the town of Barrington. I mean, it, immediately, I mean, and it is my opinion, obviously, but immediately changes the character of downtown. When you pull in and you, if you see that, it, it, it doesn't matter. It's done. And to have two or three or five of those in your downtown area is, to me, um, overwhelming and, um, and short-sighted. So this may be extreme and, and not, uh, completely well-thought-out in every aspect, but I think it's a better, it's an intermediate step um, from, like John said, the 80,000 per second unit and then 10,000, which is just, you know, free rein and open territory to.
I, I guess I don't see it as an immediate step. I think see it as a pretty drastic step. An immediate step, I could have lived with it from like, you know, 25. Probably could have got to 30, 40, just.
So for residential use in a, in the PUD, minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet, but the overall net density for residence units per acre of land can exceed one unit per 40,000 square feet if it's a single family. Two units per multifamily units. So we want to park multiple, multiple use, then that would be 20,000 uh, square feet, you know, for, um, the lot size if you're doing anything, you know, two, two units or more.
And remember, this is also the goal, portable housing, workforce housing.
No, no, no.
That's, that's.
No, that's. Never been the goal of this board that I've been on, uh, to, to do workforce housing.
Section in your zoning of workforce housing.
Uh, but I, and I think it feels extreme to you because I think 10,000 was short-sighted, too small, and we didn't see the ramifications of it. And so that's why I think 10,000 was so small. And that's why I see it extreme to go to 40. I think 40 is more in line with what should have been done and, and maybe somewhere in 20 and 30, a better end fix. But I think that the 10 was so low that it feels extreme going to 40.
And I'll tell you, if Marsha was here, I squawked about this way back when I first got on this board. But I, I hadn't, I wasn't vested in enough to, to recognize the impact of it, other than saying, I don't agree with it and I don't see what it is. And they're like, oh, it's gonna drive development in around this area and it'll help. And I was like, I don't agree with it. I don't think so. But I couldn't, I couldn't articulate how it was destructive where now we have some very clear examples. And if you look, we have all these development agencies now looking at Barrington because it's easy pickings to come in here based on the way this zoning is set up to let them come in and create mass stockyard housing that just is one big cash flow. Yeah. Right. It's this one section.
I'm still on board with 40. Um, we've, we've talked about this a few times. I don't, I'm not hearing anyone changing their mind on, on where their reservations are or whatever. So should we proceed like we did last time?
I feel we're at that point.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
Make a motion to amend four point, or make a motion to send for, to the zoning article 13, um, to amend section 4.2, parents 3, to increase the lot size for multifamily housing in the village district from an additional 10,000 square feet per unit to an additional 40,000 square feet per unit.
Question by Andy Knapp, second by Jeff Brand. Uh, Steve Diamond?
Diamond, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Ron Allard. Jeff Brand.
Brand.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Three, four to one. All right.
I respect and honor both of your convictions on this.
Yeah, this one's.
Conviction, like, like folded like a cheap.
Yeah, I just go to.
I, I didn't want 10.
Jeff gave you conviction for you.
I wanted bigger. I didn't want 10.
A motion.
But there was only one.
There was a lot of our, a lot of, uh, passionate discussion.
Well, to me, it was a choice between 10 and 4. And rather.
Any other conversation?
I agree. Thank you.
Jonas, two-way tackle.
Yeah, uh, Jeff.
Your question was, did you want this to be done like you asked on some of them or some review, or the review, uh, what I need you to do? I can't, I heard you guys say you were all.
Which we said to.
Two-way tackle.
Two-way tackle.
Right, I wasn't, I wasn't sure in a minute exactly what you're gonna do, so I just wanted to get clarification so we can let them know.
I was here, so I wasn't cleared for a minute, so I might have a pre-production.
Yeah, there was, yeah, I, I thought the two, it was the drainage, number one, because they got the park lot running off and the weapon area back there. And number two was because there was gonna be changes to Bunkford Road, they were gonna examine it.
But as far as going through our site review regulations on the city of the building and the other stuff, you didn't want that. That's what I took out of the meeting, but the minutes weren't.
Yeah, I didn't.
So I wanted to clarify it with you to give.
Yeah, I, I think that's, I think that's right, John. I, I think in, in especially seeing this, this is almost like a special use building. His requirement, I think that they have to deal with it in a state, that I don't think we want to do.
So the design of the road and the drainage analysis is what you want CMN addressed with two-way tackle and that's it?
Well, the, the lighting plan wasn't right.
The lighting plan.
Was not right either.
Look at the light.
Well, the lighting, well, did you want them to look at the lighting and make recommendations or do you want to address our regulations with the developer?
Well, I think we told them they gotta up their game, right?
Yeah, they had no photometrics. They had, they had a light. They had photometrics that showed light at the entrance, but the light was actually over the, overhang, so.
I think you could probably.
So you want to deal with that as a board, but CMN is gonna be. Okay, so that's clear.
Everybody agree?
That's all.
That's what I thought there was.
Steve, that's what I.
I just wanted to get clarification.
I think that's right.
I personally don't have an issue with them being remote.
Well, how long are we gonna be doing this? We never did this before. This is a COVID thing, right? This is, this is, you know, a COVID thing, right?
Right.
So eventually, we're gonna do away with it.
I hope not. I've asked it and not. It stays so the public can, and, and, because the public can call, call in and comment now and it's all live and people can watch, so I've.
So that's gonna continue?
Encouraged it to. Yeah, I've encouraged it to continue and.
This is better.
So, yeah, so is the select.
We know you like it.
I, I, I do have to say, after asking. Can you turn easel our way so we can see the plan? That putting things up on the screen so that everybody can see it and it can enlarge and point out things on the drawings. I, when, when that's working, that works very well.
Yeah, so that would be the only thing, I guess, for applicants. As long as they give staff stuff.
You can allow them to manipulate the screen.
Yeah, but if I was up there, I'd, I don't know, what are you looking at?
Remember when we didn't need a calling person? Applicant would turn the stuff up on the screen.
Yeah.
They would be still doing that.
Okay.
Because of the governor's mandate, it's gone away.
Yeah, wouldn't it?
Hasn't clarified and do it virtually, so you were asked, it's really a board's decision, not our decision. That's why we're here asking the board.
I, I think continue. I think they're both fine virtually. Yep. Do you want to have a vote on it?
Yes.
Yeah, whether you vote on it, yeah.
I make a motion to allow applicants and, uh, applicants to both present and continue virtually. I second. Motion by James Jensen, second by Andy Knapp, uh, Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Uh, Jeff Brand. Andy Knapp.
Aye.
James Jensen, aye. Steve Diamond.
Diamond enthusiastically, aye.
All in favor. Doesn't mean members, Steve. Members can't stay virtual forever. You, you gotta come in eventually.
Well, we'll see about that.
You get your booster yet? Get a couple boosters. Get mine for me. I don't have time. Well, I'll be, I'll be protected. Um.
You get your snow tires, I run the whole, like, free clinic right next door.
Okay. Um, next meeting? January 4th. A motion to adjourn to January 4th.
I make a motion to adjourn to January 4th.
Second.
Second by Andy Knapp. All in favor?
Aye.
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 See you January 4th. Merry Christmas, everyone.
The drugstore, no, that don't mean.